All right, if everyone could rise please for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we have everyone present this evening except for Mr. Light whom we expect to arrive shortly, so we're going to go ahead and get started. The first item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. If I could have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I assume so.
And with just the notation that due to, I think it was advertising issues, Ms. Summers?
Yes.
We're going to hear the transient lodging amendments public hearing next month. So we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that takes us to the adoption of the minutes. If anyone has any changes or wants to make a motion to adopt as they are. Nothing, nothing stood out to me. Did anybody have anything?
Gary, you got any comments on the minutes?
Welcome. But the minute's reflect, Mr. Light joined us at 7:04. What was that?
Did you get the corrections that were asked for? Are we going to make those part of it?
Oh, right, we can.
I've got them all, no need.
Would you mind to read those out loud, please, Marlena?
Um, I don't know where it's on you. So in the August, in the September minutes, Ramos was spelled incorrectly on the third page.
Okay.
I think that was the only thing on that one. And then in the September minutes, um, on the second page, Anne McCain is actually McLean.
Okay.
Um, in the last sentence, I didn't have changes spelled correctly. In the third page, Karen Hunt commented should be Karen Hunt, Jackson District, ask for confirmation that the ordinance changes was for type two requirements and to note location in the ordinance. And then the commission discussed, and I did a small type two standards, and that needs to be capitalized, and Shandong National Park, that needs to be capitalized. And then Karen Hunt, Jackson District noted that subdivisions of three or fewer lots, while more than, in our current ordinance state, it's administrative approval, while more than three lots require certified mailing to all the joint property owners, and she asked if the, that it could be continued, and also wanted a proactive approach to provide any landowners.
Okay. Thank you for reading those in, Marlena.
Thank you.
I hope everyone was able to follow along with that. Do you have a motion with those changes?
I assume so.
Thank you, Mr. Reddard. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sisk. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That takes us to the only public hearing of the night, special exception 25-08-01, Parish Division of Land. Would you mind to queue that up for us?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Warren.
Yes, sir.
Because of my friendship with the applicant, I'd like to recuse myself.
Of course.
I'm sorry to show up late.
No, we appreciate your being so forthright. And so that takes us to the special exception 25-08-01, Parish Division of Land application. Ms. Summers, would you mind to introduce that for us, please?
Certainly. Mr. Parish has property located on Bank Road identified by tax map number 28-63 at 4.8 acres in size. This parcel is zoned general commercial and lies within the general commercial overlay district. At this time, Mr. Parish wishes to divide this 4.85 acre lot into two lots, one being two acres and the other being 2.8 acres. This is pursuant to the Rapid Hennet County Code 17036H and 17069C. For history of this property, this was part of a larger tract that was rezoned in 2002 from agricultural to general commercial to allow for the relocation of the bank. With the 2002 rezoning, there were proffers attached to it. Some of those proffers included a maximum building structure as far as square feet, prohibited uses, architectural requirements, lighting signage, to name a few. Bank Road was also developed after the rezoning and has since, I will note, been taken into VDOT secondary system. At that time, owners also placed a restricted covenant on this property, one item being that any lot could be, could not be subdivided. A few months later, they amended those covenants and re-recorded them to read the subject property, including any lot thereof, may not be further subdivided except by act of the declaration. Mr. Parish has obtained his signature and order to subdivide from the declaration, which would be the bank. The Health Department commented on this application that based on a previous subdivision review, this property contains several easements. One easement provides a septic easement serving lot one, which would be the bank lot. Another easement provides a storm drainage easement for the bank. There's also an ingress egress easement serving the parcel lot 63E directly beside this lot. Previous reviews located two sites that may be suitable for a septic system location. An onsite soil evaluator may be needed to reassess, to do a reassessment of the location of the soil and the topography to ensure these sites are still suitable and follow the current regulations. If the land is approved for a division, the owner will need to apply for a subdivision review with the Health Department. VDOT commented that the subject parcel is a commercial and any future development would require site plan review and approval. The subject parcel currently has access to routes 1005, which is Bank Road. VDOT offered no comments to the county, but takes an exception to the approval of the One additional, or two additional staff recommended conditions for the permit, if recommended for approval, that this, these parcels may not be further subdivided and that all proffers of the rezoning of 02, 02, 01 would still apply. And the applicant is present for any additional questions.
Would you like to say anything at this time, Mr. Parish? And if so, would you mind to use the microphone so that they can be on the, on the record for the minutes? Of course, you will have an opportunity to speak later, as you very well know.
Okay, well, first of all, one slight correction here.
I didn't even notice. That was, that was going to be on the front page of the paper next week.
Thank you, Mr. Parish. So I went ahead and purchased this lot two or three years ago, I can't forget how, how long ago it was. And the reason was that, you know, that there's a very few commercial lots in the county. And there appears to be, you know, not that much demand for commercial lots either, but I think that will be in the future. I've had a couple of people now lately ask about these parcels, but to buy the whole thing individually would be too much for them, and this way it could happen, it could facilitate it a little easier. The, you know, I know y'all's job is to make decisions to the benefit of the long-term, you know, county welfare and to preclude any, anything that's not going to, you know, benefit the county in the long run. Everybody knows that this commercial property cannot have houses on it, so we're not asking for more houses. I was hoping that eventually we could have a pharmacy here, and they, just to give you a little history, the, the bank, bank sold the lot, this lot, to the Fall Care Hospital, and their intention was to have a pharmacy and a doctor's office there, and then that just, that just never happened. And unfortunately, I don't think you all have this in your records, unfortunately, when I purchased the property from the hospital, it's, the Fall Care Hospital is currently owned by a big conglomerate out in Tennessee or something like that, and, and they put in further restrictions that, that say, you know, no doctor's office, no pharmacy, no massage, no yoga studio, on and on, anything that would vaguely compete with them. So I have subsequently contacted the, the head person at the Fall Care Hospital, and she, and she is looking into getting these removed legally. So, so, you know, hopefully that, that'll happen because I do think that's one of the better uses for that, for that property. And I'll ask more questions later if you, if you have any.
Thank you, Chris. All right. All right, having heard that, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing on special exception 25-08-01, the Parish Division of Land application. Now's your opportunity to speak specifically on this topic, so anything that you'd like to say about this application, please do come to the microphone and state your name and the district in which you reside, and the commission will put your remarks on the record. Now's your chance to speak.
Karen Hunt, Jackson District. This application raised a number of questions for me. Per ordinance 147-40, limitation on re-subdivision. It says, "No lot which was or is created by a subdivision of land as defined by this chapter in effect at the time of the creation of the lot shall be subdivided again unless a special exception is granted by the Board of Supervisors in accordance with the provisions of Article 6 and Chapter 170." I spoke with the zoning administrator who clarified for me that a six subdivision here would preclude any of the other lot owners from requesting the same consideration. And it's unclear to me what the justification or circumstances are that was sort of the instigation for this request. Mr. Parish just clarified a little bit there, that he's had some offers or interest, but not for the whole parcel. That being said, I wonder if the other owners are aware that if this special exception is granted, that they would not be able to receive the same consideration. 170-69C, additional standards for re-subdivision, number one, says, "All lots shall front on a state-maintained road unless there's a homeowners association responsible for the repair and maintenance of the private street and all parties using are the same members." So per discussion with zoning, Bank Road is a state-maintained secondary road, but I'm wondering what is the current width of one of those easements, that existing ingress easement that serves current lot number two? I cannot tell from the plat if that is a 50-foot right-of-way, but it appears to be greater than what is being proposed. The applicant is proposing what appears to be a reduced 30-foot right-of-way, that will be the access to the second lot, the back part, if the subdivision request is approved. And so I'm just wondering if that is in accordance with this, you know, all lots front state-maintained street. The Virginia Department of Health letter references three existing easements, including a resource protection area that's along the storm drainage easement, kind of in the middle of that lot, and that requires per the proffers, a perpendicular crossing of any roads or utilities. These easements, there are three easements, and they're primarily located in the, sort of the front section closer to Bank Road of the current 4.8 acre parcel. And it would appear that the proposed subdivision would concentrate the majority of these three easements into what would be proposed as lot one of two. There is an additional drain field location that would then be proposed for lot two, and I'm just wondering how this would affect potential building locations in what would be then the new lot one, that first part of it, if this parcel, you know, were to be subdivided. Our ordinance 17045, one G, one A, so that's 45, big one, big G, and then in parentheses, one, small a, talks about promoting design quality and efficient land use with, within designated areas having underlying general commercial zoning. And I'm just wondering if subdividing a parcel where you have these easements kind of concentrated in one part of it, with that, that sort of that number of existing easements, if they're then concentrated in even smaller mass, one smaller parcel, if that promotes design quality and efficient land use? I would suggest it would be wise to just confirm that the other landowners are fully aware, because they may or may not be, of the implication here that they would not be able to request the same consideration for subdivision. That seems a little inequitable to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this topic? This is the only opportunity to speak on this application before it's taken up for consideration by the commission.
Somebody say something?
Yes, absolutely.
Good evening, I'm Brooke Miller. My wife, Ann, and I run Miller Family Health and Wellness. Our son, Henry, will be returning home to join our practice in next year, towards the summer of next year, and that poses a little, poses a little bit of a problem to us as far as space where we're currently practicing. And we're currently looking for a property to build, a facility that would house more of our needs. Where, where we are now, we're, we're too small for two providers and definitely for three providers. And so I knew, I approached Mr. Parish about this property because I knew he had this property, and I was not interested in the entire property, I was interested in the part that just makes sense for us. And while we haven't discussed price or made an agreement, that was the reason, and I think this, this is very much a need for the county and would be a good thing for the county. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Miller.
Michael Brown, Senior Hampton District. I own property across Bank Road from Mr. Parish, I have no opposition. And if I may speak on behalf of my son, Michael Brown, Jr., Fall Care County, he owns property across, also, he's not, has no opposition to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. I mean, you're welcome to speak now, or you're welcome to speak after the public hearing? As the applicant, you can continue to speak after the public hearing is closed.
Well, I was rushing on mine. They were, there's some concerns about the, the right-of-way, the 30-foot right-of-way as opposed to a 50-foot right-of-way. So I, I happen to live on Richmond Road, 729, and a lot of traffic comes out of Culpeper County, you know, to get up to Northern Virginia to go to work, and that's a 30-foot right-of-way, you know? And so I think to, I think that's 30-foot right-of-way, I mean, in the event that this might go any further, I think a 30-foot right-of-way is, is very adequate. And also, I'm not sure if it's, if it's going to be required to be paved or not, but I know that, I know that, I mean, one of the boards that I was on before had to do it for Chesapeake Bay, and I know that it's, that they don't want any more impervious ground than possible, they want the water to go into the ground when pavement doesn't allow that. And in terms of the little easement, this, the drainage area, but what would be between these two lots, there is, you can't really see it, there is a big culvert there that the bank put in to, to access between the two lots. So that's, that's already in, in place. And I had no idea that there'd be no, I had no idea that there'd be no further subdivision with the other parcels, the other lots, and that was just news to me. And I did talk to all the, all of my neighbors in, in there, and they were all okay with, with this division. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this application? All right, if there's no one else that would like to speak, I'll go ahead and close this public hearing.
Start, we'll go from there to conclude the thought. I guess start off with the fact that in the issue of division rights, as it stands now, as I read the covenants, none of the properties can be further subdivided. You was able to do it because you went back and got permission from, from the Clarence.
From the Clarence, but also it was big enough to meet all the setbacks.
But, but nobody else? Everybody would have to do what you just did?
Yes.
Everybody would have to go back to, to, to the covenant person and, and get permission? So as it stands now, none of the lots, if you didn't do nothing, none of the lots could be automatically subdivided unless you was granted permission. So you, you haven't really taken nothing away from anybody because as, because you wouldn't ask.
Right.
You're right. You didn't preemptive anybody to use this last one, you simply went to ask. And as it stands now, if somebody had read the covenants, they would have said, well, I don't have any division rights. Correct? So you didn't do nothing outline here. Follow me?
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
Well, I mean, it's to your, I mean, it kind of nullifies what she's.
Yeah, I don't wish to spread anybody else, that's for sure.
It's kind of nullifies that, what she was getting at about.
Yeah, that's all there is to it, yeah.
Yeah, so that, I just wanted to take that off the table as an issue. Little, on the notice to the property owners, little semantics here, it was a tax map 63H, and I looked and looked and looked for that, and it turned out to be the highway, Bank Road, and that is listed as being owned by Rapid Hennet County. Is that, that's not true.
That's correct. It has been termed over against state and accepted it.
Okay.
Yep.
Did Rapid Hennet County actually own it at one time? That far, so? I never, I never thought that they actually owned it.
I don't know why the commissioner created a map number for it.
Because I've never seen the county own a road.
Okay, well, me neither, so.
Okay, all right.
I think we're more in a Chester Gap, though.
I guess this, this is a pretty busy site, and, you know, we, when we addressed this back, you know, 20, I guess 22 years ago, it was, it was a lot of consideration, a lot of meetings done about this, and it was, it was a big item in the community, and I guess this is also the first time that the lighting ordinance was really applied to, to a property here with, with the new bank itself. So it's, this, this has a lot of history here going on. You know, this was, this, this was developed as really a prime commercial, they had, the bank had visions of this being a, a very attractive commercial division, that they were hoped that other businesses would, would, would come in there, and they have covenants on materials, brick and things like that that has to be done. So it's been high hopes that something would have been done in here, and I guess it got delayed for any number of reasons, from maybe the covenants they had on it, to the bank was very strict on what they wanted to be done in there. And things kind of got started here with the hospital doing this. And I got a call yesterday from Mike Leake, who gave me a lot of education on the hospital, and I believe he thought that they were going to build about a 5,000-square-foot building on this property. And it was a complete site plan done, and he, he told me that pretty much the whole site was used for that site plan, and that it was a very difficult site to, to, to manage, and that 5,000-square-foot building pretty much used the whole site. And, you know, they, for whatever reasons, a number of reasons, I guess, they, their business plan went another direction, and this never happened in here. So that, that was one item. I guess the bank there has the, their drain field on this property down front, right, Chris?
That's right.
And I think that's a drip system, which tells me, of course, you know, that the soils are marginal, and I don't, I don't know how far out those soils reach that are marginal. And I noticed that Barry Hadley did the soils work there. He is retired, well, the guy that did the work is no longer there, and Barry, who signed off on it, he's retired and turned it over to his son, and I'm not sure if his son has not now went to work for another group, so they may be completely out of business, but I'm a little bit, you know, apprehensive about doing a division based upon soil work now, that's about 22, well, I think it was 2001, it's just the date on the soil work. So I'm a little bit apprehensive about looking at soil work now that's 24 years old, you know? So that's a little concerning, because I'm sure every, as in everything else, the requirements has changed on, with, with the Health Department. So I'm a little bit concerned about, about that issue. And are we absolutely sure that the entity that now owns the bank, the bank itself, has nothing to do with the property, I guess? Are we absolutely sure that Blue Owl is the entity that's in charge of the covenants? Blue Owl is the LLC or whatever that owns the bank?
Yeah, I actually hired a lawyer to track that person down. Yeah.
Blue Owl is actually, it was, the rights of Atlantic Union was conveyed to Blue Owl to do that?
Yes.
Okay, so that's absolutely certain, legal. Okay, good. And basically, this property is really subject to two groups of covenants. It's, it's, it's subject to the Butler Covenants, original that was put on it, and then it's subject to the remaining covenants that Rapid Hennet, Atlantic Union, Union Bank, whatever put on it. So I guess it's, it's got two overlays of covenants on this property.
Yes, very limited, actually.
Yeah. In, in terms of this, you know, the ingress egress here, you know, I, I don't want to, you know, I want to see something quality happen here, I want to see something long-lasting that's, that's, that's good, that happens here, and maybe, you know, you get a doctor's office, maybe you get a pharmacy, maybe you get a physical therapy place, and maybe this will become, you know, what we need for older people in the county here. And, you know, and I want to see it done right, you know? I want to see it be quality, you know, I don't, I, I, it has to be a paved road, I don't, I don't see how, I mean, I don't see how you can, you know.
I agree with that, but I think a 30-foot right-of-way is fine.
Well, you know, you're going to have, you know, medical use, everything else going on here, you're probably going to have some, maybe some of these senior transit buses coming in, you're going to have UPS coming in, I don't know, you may even have an occasional tractor-trailer coming in to drop something off, you know, freight-wise. And if we require pretty much all-new subdivisions residential and everything, where you got mostly residential traffic to have a 50-foot right-of-way, I really think this should have a 50-foot right-of-way. So in the future, if you, you know, down the road, if it gets upgraded to where the use in there increases and you get other uses in the subdivision where it's a pedestrian area, you got room for sidewalks. So I really think it really needs to be a 50-foot right-of-way to make it a quality project. And I'm concerned about, you know, crossing that resource area, putting that road across there, maybe a culvert in there, and that culvert might have been measured and put in there for one specific, you know, use of controlling the water, not necessarily to put fill on top of it, you know, to do traffic over it. So I think, you know, I'm in favor of dividing this property, but I don't think we're quite ready for primetime yet. And, you know, I'm very happy that Mr. Miller, Dr. Miller came here tonight and let the cat out of the bag, that he's officially the guy that's looking at the front of it. And I think the smart thing for y'all to do is, if you want this property, Dr. Miller and Mr. Parish, I think the smart thing y'all should do is to do a site plan for your building that you want to do, and make sure everything fits, and not get a property that you come in with that, you know, we need a variance of this, we need a variance you come in with that, you know, we need a variance of this, we need a variance of that, you should, I need another quarter of an acre or something, you should make the socks fit today with it, and make sure your dreams can come true with the property you get. So that's all I have to say right now.
I think, I might need some clarification here. It seems to me, isn't, the proposal is that if there were to be a medical clinic or whatever, it would be off of Bank, the Bank Road, right?
Yeah, off of Bank Road, yeah.
So the second piece.
The right-of-way would probably be in the, in the other building, it's here, probably share the same entrance.
Yeah.
That one, throughout.
So if you're having tractor-trailers, how big is Bank, the Bank, Bank Road? Isn't it worth it?
Yeah.
I don't think it's fifty feet.
I would think that you, I would think that you've got fifty-foot of right-of-way for Bank Road.
Stephanie, because, Steph, look, when you look at the front lot that fronts on Bank Road, the first thing you see there in that little box, that's the drip area for the, for the, and if you was to build a building on that, you're gonna have to come up the hill back towards the back, and either try to place it between those two drain fields or come to the back of it. So you're gonna be using that shared road for a very long distance to get access to a new building on the front lot. Because you can't put a building in that drain field area down front, and you're not gonna be able to put a, a building.
Yeah, no, I got that, right.
Yeah, so it's gonna be way back, any new building's gonna be way back. And that's, that's another thing why, you know, there's not gonna be a little bit of use of that road, it's gonna be a lot of use of that new proposed road.
So what, what did we say that the width and the right-of-way of Bank Road is?
It's fifty feet.
Okay, thank you.
The right-of-way and the width.
Great.
Oh, no, the right-of-way is fifty feet. It has to be fifty feet for the state to accept it into their system.
Okay. So Bank Road has fifty-foot right-of-way?
Mm-hmm.
Just a comment on that, I think that you have to have, you would need fifty-foot of right-of-way in order, if there's any future utilities that has to come in there. For instance, if, if electric line was decided to be put on the ground, and that, that's the thing we're dealing with today, you would need fifty foot because you can't, that, that electric line or whatever type utility it was, you cannot run over top of, with, on the road. So it's no way, I know what you're talking about on Richmond Road, but that's not a safe road, that is not a safe road at all. And as we're saying here, and I think y'all, I know that y'all wanna do the right thing. And I, I do want to see, see the future that, you know, we could possibly have a pharmacy, or we could have another doctor's office here or something, I think it's much needed in this county. But again, I support that you do it the right way, and my thought right now is, you would need fifty-foot right-of-way in there.
Well, I, I can say, I received three calls, and all of this stuff about the, the state, you know, the new state subdivision law, everybody thinks, or the three that called me and said, he's gonna put houses in there. I'm like, no, I'm not putting houses in there. But trying to get that across is another thing. So just for the record, this is about houses, correct?
Yeah.
Correct. So, so, so if they're listening, hopefully. I, I mean, Mr. Henry points out some, some very good points there. I, I'm, I'm all for doctor's office, pharmacy, things great, but he does bring out the piece of, you know, in order to protect everybody, you wanna make sure that a, a site plan or whatever can be done. Other than that, I, I really don't have anything else to say.
Well, it'd be really great if that piece, I mean, it'd be great to have some commercial use, and it'd be great to have a medical facility out there.
It's much needed.
Have you tried a pharmacy? It'd be really, really helpful.
My confusion lies in the previous covenants, because the property I have has some covenants on it that are kind of frustrating at times, more so for my neighbor, which I'm ready for, but nevertheless, the twenty, twenty, or two thousand?
God bless you.
I guess it was one of them, two thousand and six, the amended covenants. Have those been overcome by new covenants by the declarant? No, they're all, all those covenants are still in place. So we don't have that yet? You, you have all those. But not the release of? The only thing you don't have is when I voted for the hospital, they further, that they, and they told me that they do this with all the property they sell, some big outfit, and they, and they automatically put it in, but I'm encouraged by the person in charge and Clark here that it's, that they can drop. So of course, if they don't drop it, there's not gonna be a, a lawsuit there. So further subdivision covenants still stand? That mean, not further subdivided? So we, how do we even act on this until that's released?
He, he has a deed that's in our package that's been signed, okay?
That's what I'm trying to pick.
That releases that, so when that's recorded, huh?
Which one's that?
It's right on the screen, it's the proposed.
I have not seen that one.
Yeah.
It's in there.
Yeah, that, that solves that problem.
It's labeled as proposed division.
Push it on up top. There you go.
Starts out like this.
There you go, Chris, uh, Brian, look at the top there. That solves that problem.
I don't see that.
It would be on the third or page.
Or is it the, it's the amended covenants document, right?
Not where the actual signature is.
At this point, you're waiting on one that allows you to put a doctor's office there? Well, that's in fact, if you get this signature, they can change, you know, they can change the people, they can change. All right, all right, I don't know how I made this up.
Well, I, I just wanna say that I think it's a good application, if, if there's questions that we need to, you know, work through, I hope we can do that, because this is supposed to be a, a commercial development site, and so far, the, the bank is the only, the commerce on it. And if we, if we say in our plan, and we show in our zoning, that we wanna locate commerce to this site, I would hope we would find a way to work through the details to make that happen.
One of my concerns, not particularly with this, just in general, is that this was rezoned into what I assume was agriculture.
That's correct, yes.
And that's what seems to be behind it. And they proffered a bunch of stuff to get into the commercial zoning, and they were slowly unwinding it. You know, this wouldn't have been, they shouldn't have put in, they couldn't have done this for houses, or anything else back then, to get all this, these rights up to get this commercial.
So this was a commercial overlay district, the comp plan said, this is where we want the commercial to happen. So.
So it's, this did, does, did, or does?
Both. So, so the bank came in, and, and had a contract on this property, and that's what they wanted to build, and they had to do the rezoning. And, and they probably went beyond where they should, could've, probably gotten it approved, because they wanted to do something that was gonna protect their new building and give integrity to it, and make something really attractive, and they were hoping to attract other nice businesses in there that would be clients of theirs, so they was looking for.
Maybe help them pay for the new building.
Well, they, you know, they, in a perfect world, they would've been happy to probably buy five acres, but they had to buy twenty acres. So that's, so they got into the development business by default, because, you know, the whole, Mrs. Butler was selling the whole thing, not five acres. And it really needed to be done this way, so somebody could make, put all this stuff on paper, do all the plan, do the roads and everything, have a future for it, and have an in-and-out, you know, schoolhouse road, two-eleven access and all that. And, you know, we went, we had a lot of hearings on it, and we, we spent a lot of time on it, and, you know, you know, like a lot of Rappahannock land, it had its problems, and you see some of the problems, you know, what they are today, poor soils, you got, you know, terrain issues, so, you know, they went beyond with their covenants, that probably beyond what they had to do. And then they, you know, they got bought and sold a couple times, and, and the, and the new owners were a lot bigger than what they were, and they didn't care about fifteen acres of commercials on land in Rappahannock, that wasn't their interest. So then the bank got in trouble a year or two ago, and they sold the bank, they sold the real estate, somebody else now, LLC owns the real estate, and they rented to the bank. So they don't even own the dirt anymore, the bank doesn't, they just rent it for next seventeen years, right? So that's kind of where the bank came in and came out of it. So if I can sum up, I think where we are, to make a summation here, Brian, you know, I think we need updated soil work here to show the capacity of these areas that we designated twenty-two years ago. I think that needs to be addressed by a soil person. I think an engineer has to put in on paper here the fifty-foot road, you know, and what it's gonna look like, the radius and everything down there. And this road is gonna serve two people, two lots, and, you know, with the doctor's office, it's gonna have a lot of use, and somebody whoever builds on the second lot is probably gonna be even more used. So it has to be designed by an engineer, not a surveyor, you know? And I think the final thing is that this engineer needs to review that stormwater area, because we don't wanna do anything that affects that stormwater management area that was put in for the bank. You know, it's gonna be crossed now by traffic, and that needs to be addressed by an engineer. I think they come back with these three items, we really got something that we can act on. Are we, am I missing anything?
No, and in fact, as you're enumerating them, it strikes me as almost exactly what we requested from the food bank when they were seeking to relocate onto one of these lots, that we asked for, what they're gonna do with the stormwater, and what they're gonna do with the right-of-way. And we asked for just a simple site plan, not the more complex site plan, with basically only these details.
You know, I, I don't know whether this division's gonna create additional stormwater plans, issues, because you're gonna have two, two locations now, so I don't know whether that's gonna create additional stormwater plans that need to be addressed, but I'm not, I don't think anybody at this table, maybe Tommy can, Tommy Atkins can say that there's gonna be additional stormwater issues, because you're gonna have two structures, two buildings here now. I don't know, you could well have, you're gonna have more runoff than if you had one building. So it seems like to me, you're gonna have additional stormwater considerations.
Well, I don't know, judging from what Clark here and Health was planning to do, if they were gonna take up the whole lot, that would create the worst stormwater situation, I think.
Probably the reason, haven't seen that, what they were doing, probably the reason that was eating up so much room, is that they put on facilities on site to handle stormwater, would be my guess.
Well, there's only one those lot there, where they put, what they called again.
You know, we, we built a bank in Warrington, just got done. We had to handle stormwater, and we had to put an underground tank in to handle the stormwater. It was about a quarter of a million dollars, you don't see it, but it's there.
That leaves me out.
So I don't know, that's why I said, I'm not the engineer, you know, Chris, but, you know, when you, when you dislocate water, you gotta put it someplace.
I had a question about the, the existing storm drain easement, just out of curiosity, what's the little pipe step? Is that just, you want to? That's the second one. But what, what is, why this part? I'm asking you more particularly, because is that just the way the, the train is?
I don't know.
That creates that?
Okay.
I'm just curious.
I don't know.
There's no way that, I mean, I would love it if the potential buyers would take care of this, and if contingent, whatever contingencies, they would, they would, they got to be a lot simpler. And that, in other words, if it didn't work out, then, you know, it's a sale, but I believe it was, I'm okay with a right-of-way. But I don't know, this thing sounds pretty prohibitive in terms of getting an engineer to, whatever you're talking about.
You know, Chris, I don't know, when you cross that stormwater management area with a road, I don't know what that means. When an engineer gives us a letter that says, no big deal, no big deal. If he says you need to do X, Y, Z, then it's X, Y, Z. I mean, we're not qualified, we don't have a staff, people to do that.
So on this survey, what, are you talking about U three or E four?
What, what do you mean?
This, this, this established on the survey by now.
Which items you want, can you, I don't know what you're saying.
Well, I'm, I forgot, stormwater.
You're, when you, right now, it appears to me, the property line between lot one and two is right down through the middle of the stormwater area.
E, E four.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
And, and to access lot two, you're gonna have to cross that stormwater management area to get to lot two.
That's right.
So what does that mean in terms of what has to be done? Do, do they need a wider right-of-way there for the road?
Yeah, I understand.
You know, I just don't know how you cross that, I think it's an important item.
I think when we requested this of the food bank, though, we allowed their surveyor to handle it, if that was an option, because it was Dan Clark.
Well, you know, the food bank's lot was a lot simpler than this, I think. It was out there on the corner of Bank Road and also Schoolhouse Road, they had road furniture on two sides there, and it did have a swell coming down through it, but it, it didn't have these other easements, it didn't have a drain field easement for another property on it, it didn't have this already existing stormwater management area. I mean, they were, in, in essence, they had a property that they could work with the whole thing to address these things. This property here has already been impaired by these other easements and reservation areas.
I, I just, I don't mean to smile, but it always seems like whatever lot we have in front of us is, is the worst lot in the bunch at the time, so.
These drain, these, where it says, they have previously approved drain field, the, whoever buys these lots and what, depending on where they're gonna put their structure and, and how big a drain field they're gonna need, they're wanting to pick a different area for the drain field.
That's right.
It'd be kind of ridiculous for me to get a drain field approved and then.
Well, you know, if you wanna go to Hadley, and Hadley can tell you, if he still exists, like I said, that these drain fields, he can come out and look at them and say, they have not been touched, they have not been disturbed, and dirt has not been cut off of them. I'm like, you know, I don't know if there's been, those are worked on here, there, and this and that, you know, he can look at them and say, okay, they're the same as I looked at it twenty-four years ago, they have not been disturbed, and these drain field areas... They have not been disturbed and these drain field areas, state regulations still are valid and it can still be used. And, and these will support a building of, you know, 120 people or whatever usage. That's fine. I just need more than what it says there that was done 24 years ago, I think. It makes sense to me.
Right, right, I have a feeling.
I'm not trying to reach, Chris, I'm just saying that.
On lot one here, where, where they have the adjacent location of the previously approved drain field, it looks to me like that's going to have to be moved. I have a feeling that that was approved before the bank built the drain field, you know, closer to the Bank Road. And so that takes away a lot of space, you know, for a, a building and parking. I got a feeling that that drainage is going to have to be relocated anyway. And I would love it to wait until whoever buys this lot, figure it out, find a site plan and make sure the setbacks there, et cetera, et cetera. But I got a feeling that that drain field is going to have to be moved.
Well, there again, if, if Hadley does a letter that says, hey, this drain field's still relevant, it, it hasn't been touched, it will support this amount of gallon disposal, that's fine. I just, you know, I've, I've seen residential lots that, you know, the lot next door was sold and, and they cut a foot off of the lot next door and the drain field no longer was valid. And, or the regulations changed, I don't know. And plus, when it tells me it's drip, you know, it, it's like, it goes from A grade to a lower grade to me in terms of land quality. And, like, I'm, I'm in favor of this, Chris. It's just, you know, it's, it's, it's not quite up to, to the standards it should be. I mean, we should be looking, I mean, I think we should look at this the same way as if it was almost a new division. I mean, you got head starts and stuff here, but, you know, like the drain work gets 24 years old.
There's a lot of lots to say of, and no, no greenfield at all, and they ironize a contingent upon, you know, certain.
But most of the time when you divide it, most of the time when you divide it, you have to give that to the county of drain field work to get the lot approved. And you do have something here, and we're willing to give you credit, but I'm willing to give you credit, I'm not speaking to the board, but I'm willing to give you credit for it as long as you tell me, somebody tells me this work that was done 24 years ago is still valid. I'm not going to take it point blank today and say it's valid unless somebody in that field tells me it's valid. It's like getting a physical done by Mr. Miller, Dr. Miller, 24 years ago. Say, yeah, I've got a physical done, it's 24 years old, I'm great shape. That's not true necessarily.
Anybody else?
Well, you know, I'm going back to, I'm thinking about that 50-foot right of way. Whether or not, does it really need to be engineered and, you know, what's, what's the surface, what if it's, what if we say the surface is a porous surface, does that, does that still need all the engineering for the drainage? How many, you know, what are we looking at in terms of water runoff and?
Looks like to me you're dropping, you're going to be dumping that water maybe down on that drain field that belongs to the bank. So, and I'm sure if you dump water on that drain field down there, there's a drip irrigation already and that fails, the bank's not going to be happy.
That bank's drain field was the highest weight in the air.
Is that one, is that down there between?
No.
Which one's the banks?
I would say it's about E2. E2.
Yeah.
I got a feeling what happened is they, they approved these two and then, then they realized that they couldn't get, you think, perfectly low, like below the bank, it's going to be way over here and kind of approaches on the other.
I think the main thing you need the engineer for is, is the entrance itself, the radius and that kind of stuff down there, you know? Road itself. And if that, you know, if this thing gets developed, all these lots in there get developed, it might become a pedestrian friendly area and people will walk from one place to another. There'd be some traffic, I'm not saying, you know, but it.
But it already happens.
Well, and, well, that's why it, it should be a 50-foot right of way. So if they need to do additional work 20 years from now, you know, to make it pedestrian friendly, there's room to do it. And we require 50 foot on all new residential, so where there's less traffic than this, I don't think we're, we're doing anything unreasonable.
Yeah, I believe if they put this in to begin with, they would put a 50-foot right of way.
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion on the table. Do we have a second or any, if I may restate a motion?
I guess if you all want a motion, I would say.
I thought you made a motion.
I would make the motion that we table this application until the next meeting to request additional information and basically ask an applicant to update the soil study work to, to verify that the capacity and the soil area that's been approved is, is still valid and hasn't been disturbed and could still be used for the, any future development on each lot. That the, the road that's now being shown is a new road of, of access for both lots and is 30-foot be increased with 50-foot and also showing the, the turn lane off of, of Bank Road with the correct entrance that VDOT would require. And, and, and a review of, by an engineer of any requirements, impacts of access over the stormwater management area of the new road to be addressed and explained. I'm not saying he has to draw it, Chris, but he has to tell us, you know, it's not an issue, it is an issue, if it is an issue, this is what has to be done. You don't have to necessarily, I don't, you know.
There can be simple answers to those.
You don't have to spend $10,000 answering that question, but, you know, you have a real engineer address that. Follow me.
So it'd be an engineer for that, it would be a soil person for the drain fields and then it would be a surveyor for the right of way.
Survey, survey, surveyor. I think your engineers should address the entry, the turn lane off of Bank Road. I don't, if he, I guess your surveyor could go to VDOT standards and, and just draw them in. If he feels comfortable with that.
Well, I'll second that. I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second. I, I just don't know if we need that 50-foot right of way. I mean, it's, it's, it's ending up back at the property in the back, it's not.
But you're going to have a lot of traffic on it. You're talking about building a building on it, you're going to have a lot of patients, a lot of people constantly going to that medical office and it's another compatible office of therapy, you're going to have five or six cars an hour going in there and using it. And that is the traffic flow to each building.
I think that Mr. Parrish has already agreed to, he'd go with the 50-foot right of way.
Right of way would just be a matter of getting a surveyor to go from 30 feet to 50 feet. I mean, that would be it.
Okay, so that's agreeable to you.
That's not a big, that's not a big.
Yeah.
Expense or a big deal, but I just, I would rather be able to sell the lots contingent upon a surveyor, of, of soil work to the satisfaction of the buyer because it depends on, you know, what they're, what they're, what they need, what their use is going to be. I would love to just, I don't mind getting a surveyor to just change the right of way to 50 feet, but this other stuff, I'm really not responsible for that now. We have enough time for it next week.
We can do the next meeting after that.
I'm hoping to go out to US.
I'm going to South Dakota tomorrow, so. I mean, we, we approve something, we should have integrity to our decisions and not do it half ass. So we got to make sure that the drain fields on these properties, somebody's going to spend, you know, Dr. Miller, you know, we just got done building the bank in Warrington that cost us, you know, almost a thousand dollars a foot. You know, good quality medical bill, you got to do brick on it, you know, it's going to be four to $600 a foot. So I, I, I can't see somebody doing an investment like that and not wanting to know that there's a substantial reliable area that will support a drain field. There's no public water, there's no sewer, it'll probably be on this site. So by the time you do these drain fields, then you got to look at where you put your wells because you got setbacks in all these drain field areas. So you can move these drain fields around, but then you got to move the wells around. And we didn't even talk about that and that can be settled by then later. So, you know, it's just not something you can sit here and play armchair developer on, it's real issues.
And could the soil work, I think, I think you said this, Al, but just to enumerate, so it's not overly burdensome, it could be a simple statement that the soil work done previously is still valid, correct?
Yeah. You know, what he would probably do, he would probably pull his file, look at his work, probably drive out here, look at the areas he approved, see it was not disturbed, and then he can probably write a letter to us. I think that's the scope of the work that he would apply to it.
Okay. So I just want to, I just want to be clear that it's, it's simple site work and simple follow-up in terms of documentation. We're not expecting a whole new set of plans or a whole different, a whole new report if the old one still holds water.
Probably not. Now, you know, you get your engineer out there crossing that stormwater area, you know, this, there's state of Virginia issues there and, you know, I don't know what that is, you know, but if he's crossing stormwater area, there'll be issues with the EQ there. Guarantee it. And we, and no need to approve a division if you're going to create DEQ problems. And, and the engineer can tell us, you know, you can tell Chris, Chris don't know, we don't know. I mean, we want to prove this as soon as possible, quickly as possible, this is the least amount of money to Chris, but we need to do our work. So.
All right, any further discussions?
I think Mr. Henry makes it pretty clear and we're hoping Mr. Miller buys it, we're hoping the forms he goes up, but what if he doesn't? What if Dollar General, I don't know, somebody else comes in and they do have to have your trucks coming in? I think it's prudent, Mr. Parrish would want that too. You need to know.
Yeah. It would be wonderful to see more activity on these lots, especially since they've been designated for commercially use for so long and it's failed to materialize. So I do hope what we're asking for tonight hasn't made it overly burdensome and that, and that we'll find a way to work through these couple of points with you. So with that, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much. That concludes.
Do we push it to next meeting?
It's whenever they bring it back to us, I guess. Whenever you bring it back to us, Chris. You go to Key West, see you in January.
Yeah, March.
March.
You can always join us on Zoom.
Yeah, we're, oh, it's not yet.
All right, you all are of course welcome to stay or go. The transient lodging public hearing has been delayed due to a lack of advertisement, so we'll move that one to next month. And that takes us to public comment. Anyone that would like to speak is welcome, if you get this time, please come to the microphone and state your name and the district in which you reside and we'll look forward to hearing what you have to say. You can still talk about it. You can still talk about it. I'm so sorry, it didn't get advertised correctly.
I figured out you were ready, just might as well.
Nothing's going.
It's better than anything on TV.
How's your project going?
Yeah. Good, good, but, um, yeah, we have a very busy summer season.
Good.
The fall is, it's good, our weekend's about, during the week is pretty short, yeah. And mostly wanted to come here and hear about the conference center, um, definition. Yeah, I'm having my wedding on our farm next year. We're planning to convert the barn into a wedding stage, so we're thinking how that happens, if we're going to open up and share.
Of course, for your personal use, that's your personal business.
Yeah.
And maybe that will be the dry run that informs your business decision.
Yeah, and, and I think we're pretty interested to open it and let people use it as well. Any guidance or feedback? Don't think about doing maybe a vineyard, a vineyard, I don't know if that would make it fall under our good tourism.
All, all matters like that are, are addressed by the Commonwealth. They're not addressed by the county. But the summers can help you navigate those intricacies if you have questions.
I just wanted to be able to hear what's going on.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else that would like to speak? All right. If no one else wishes to speak for public comment, that takes us to electrical generating plants and facilities. I think we're still waiting for direction on this from PEC. They were going to send us some. They were going to send us some.
Yeah, if you would like, staff can work on a draft to put forward to the planning commission, a definition, a change in the use table, and then some additional regulations.
That's what we're waiting for, for this, for, that's what we're waiting for, for Ms. Parvally.
Okay.
But she was chasing down a few details, I believe with Gary, to start to create that language.
We can try to have those by the next meeting.
That sounds good. Anyone else like to say something?
Can I add something to that? Because as I recall, the recommendation from PEC was kind of ambivalent about modifying the current definition of generated facility to include substation or something.
Yeah.
Or creating a different definition. And I strongly favor the second option of creating a separate definition because in the industry, generation and distribution are very clearly different parts of the system. And for us to define distribution substations into the generation, I think would cause confusion into infinity. So that's my recommendation for that request.
Sounds good. Anyone else have any thoughts on that?
Well, I agree with Carrie. I remember, I remember thinking that, but there was, there were some other issues that they were going to address.
You were going to look up the sound, the noise generating issues and some of those things I believe they were going to look into for us.
So with respect to additional standards, examples or something?
Yes, and, and cite examples of counties that are currently doing those things.
I should, I think we should still just rely on the fact that it's not mentioned in our, is there an order that says you can allow that? It's not mentioned, it's not allowed, like data centers. It's the safest way to go. We have some.
Are you being serious right now, Brian?
No. That's dumb. You know, if you're dancing around this thing, we know why she wanted, why the PEC's behind this thing.
Moles.
We'll, we'll throw these little speed bumps, we'll use Rappahannock County to, to throw these speed bumps from keeping them putting data centers in Rappahannock and Culpeper, or Culpeper and Culpeper, it's a joke. So, so, so did you all read where Rappahannock Electric maybe has on the table, building a nuclear power plant?
Yeah.
Yeah. So in their service area, we're probably the least populated area and make the most sense to have one.
Well, I, that, that flies in the face of the statements that were made at the last board supervisors meeting by Mr. Roddy, who said that it would be a, a big leap from, for REC to go from distribution, which is all it is now, they're a reseller, to generation. And they're not in a place where being in the power generating business makes sense. So, but who knows, things happen fast sometimes. But for, for now, they, they're reselling from Dominion and then they're developing this new business arm to hand, to strictly handle the data center use and try to keep the, the data center use from, from basically overburdening their other users, their members.
I think with these, those many, many plants, there's going to be a lot more players in production of electricity.
I agree.
I'm supposed to meet Wednesday with. I'm supposed to meet Wednesday with a man, right-of-way specialist, talking about the power poles. And I asked him, you know, curiosity, what, what are you, well, we're talking about, you know, producing more. And I'm like, really? So I'm supposed to meet with him Wednesday at 1:00?
Just say no.
Nancy Reagan said that.
It's still sometimes the right answer. There does seem to be a lot going on with that these days. I mean, do you all wanna take up language for dealing directly with data centers? Staff has said that they think it's not wise, and we've certainly kicked it around a few times.
I'm not smarter than Mr. Curry, who I talked off, whoever else they're talking to. I think you're smarter than Mr. Curry. We'll see if he watches these videos.
I, I can't participate in this conversation.
That was Mr. Sherman.
He listens for the minutes, so. At this point, I think, you know, if four of us wanna do the work, we can always take it up.
You here next year?
No. Just remember that when you take your count.
Try to trick us.
I mean, it's not guaranteed that any of us will be here next year. So for that, we are very grateful that we are here tonight. All right. So we'll wait for that material from Ms. Parvally, and then if y'all could take a look at it, and then we'll get started on that. It does seem like a short meeting tonight, but we were anticipating that other public hearing. It's unfortunate we can't pick that up this evening. Any new business? There's none. Informational, we still have the same work before us. Roundtable discussion. Anybody have anything for the good of the order that they'd like to discuss?
Well, I was wondering, just, just, if our subdivision ordinances are compliance with the state code, even without the, the issue of whether or not, the latest issue having to do with changing the, the body that makes the decision about them, maybe we should look at those subdivision ordinances and make sure that they do comply with it. I mean, Mr. Curry indicated that they were not.
That's his next step. I think that's, that's the next step in that work, is digging into subdivision ordinance more.
Yes, we just have time to do it.
Yeah, okay.
So we had our last intake session at Chester Gap for the comprehensive plan last night. Does anyone have any strong feelings about how they'd like to proceed with this work? It can be challenging to take on in the course of a regular meeting. We are heading into the holidays, middle of November. What would you all like to do?
Yeah, I, I liked the idea. I really did. And Mr. Sherman, I'm talking briefly there, but just one perimeter there. But about the 30, you know, the gap of water tanks, you know, like they have in Chester Gap. I mean, I don't know if it's something we could, I don't wanna say mandate, but, you know, I mean, if they, if they're proffered, they get a split or whatever, hey, you want, you want a big holding tank? That's perfect for, you know, put your $30,000 in a tank and then. I don't know that, you know, money-wise, it's feasible or who pays for it or whatever, but the, I'd never even thought about that as far as throwing up mountains and a lot of the things around, a lot of the houses around here are off the beaten path and having a, a place or places that are strategically located, you know. It sounds like a good idea, but money-wise, I don't know if it's a cost prohibitive thing or not. I, I, I know really nothing about it other than what I was told.
It hasn't really occurred to me till last night about that ingress, ingress to Chester Gap and Lake Front Royal and having a connector road between the two. I think something really that both counties need to discuss and take a look at. It, it benefits both.
Well, the other issue is whether or not you can, you know, can you designate that as the Chester Gap is a, what, is he suggesting a sanitation district or something like that? I mean, really, having that number of people up there with, with the roads in that condition is criminal. I mean, I think, you know, I know they can make it, you know, everybody can get together and have an association, but I, it does seem to me that the county, whether or not we have a legal responsibility, we have a moral responsibility for, you know, being able to get those guys in and out with it.
So, but we heard a lot of good things last night about the community of Chester Gap. Probably more, it's probably the best one we ever had on getting into what is in a community and what they need and what's going on, everything from the fire situation to the roads, everything. And, you know, I, I, but then we hit up to the political reality of, of, of the county and the BOS. And, and so I think what we need to do is, is put these issues into the comp plan of Chester Gap so that it's something that is there, they know about it, it's to the public. If people are gonna go to Chester Gap, they, they know these issues of Chester Gap in the comp plan. And down the road, if, when the county has more resources or more resources are available from other sources, they can start looking towards doing things. But, you know, you know, Rapid Hennick County is tight, and they never do nothing until they're forced to do it. And I've said before that if it wasn't for DEQ, we wouldn't have Amosville landfill in, in sight down and we'd still be dumping trash on Clark's Farm down in Woodville if it wasn't for DEQ. So, I mean, we're the, we don't do nothing until somebody tells us we have to do it. Just like the courthouse. We would, we'll be in this for another hundred years if the judges didn't say, you need a new courthouse.
Well, and the other, the other example of that, that's a stunning, stunning example of if the community needs it, the users need to pay for it, which I acutely feel, living in Sperryville, is Sperryville Sewer. If you need it, then you should pay for it. I already paid for my sewer. I, I don't need to pay for your sewer, too. And, and I already volunteer with fire and rescue or people that volunteer with fire and rescue. And so they, so we have every other company in the county can field a response, but yet the full-time paid personnel is paid by everybody. Why isn't that cost, which is $150,000 a quarter at this point? It's not fair to put it on that small population, but those are the people that benefit the most. And they're not volunteering, but people that live, and I'm not pointing a finger and saying this, but people in the proximity of other companies are volunteering, are managing to field volunteers to respond to calls. So if the people in your community prefer not to volunteer, why should people in other communities that volunteer pay for your volunteer response? And I hear Chief Brown's response that we'll respond wherever we're needed. Every company in the county can say that.
That's true.
Every company in the county can say that, and 1,400 can say that. So while I hear that and I understand that and I know it's true, that is mutual. And so, you know, I hear about the roads. It's a very tough situation with VDOT in that there's not, it's a glass slipper situation. There's not a shoe that fits correctly trying to get VDOT to take them into the system. And, and there are some programs being still formulated that are road improvement programs that aren't road paving programs.
Right.
And I don't believe that final guidance is available yet, but perhaps when the time comes, those may be a solution.
Who can apply for it? I mean, that's, that seems to be the issue to me. If there's not an association, does it have to, is it the county that oversees?
Not, I don't know. And I know Debbie's run it down. And I, we looked at it when I was on public safety committee, and I know Debbie's run it down nine ways to Sunday. And if, if she and, and Mark Ness but haven't been able to figure it out from VDOT, I think it's really tough.
It is really tough. I mean, that's the issue to me that is so critical is that the roads are just, they're, they're, they're dangerous, you know. The ones on the periphery, if you, you know, you need four-wheel drive just to get.
Everywhere you buy, it comes with something. I mean, my sewer bill now has doubled in the last year, you know. It used to be 150 bucks a quarter, now it's 1,200 bucks a year. That's a chunk of change.
It is a chunk of change.
So, I mean, buyer beware is true, and it's, it's true for different reasons in different places. And I'm sure we could all enumerate things that are, are great about the area in which we live and, and then some things that are challenging about the area in which we live that are unique to that as opposed to other areas of the county.
Yeah, but if our mandate, which I think probably every public body in the county is, is mandated to do is to look after the health and welfare of the population, and you know that there's a huge population up there on that hill with totally inadequate roads, where you can't get fire engines, never mind, you know, a regular car. I, I just think there's gotta be something that the county should do to help make those roads passable.
And you won't hear me, you'll hear me say a taxing district and the people that need the work should pay for it.
Would you rather the guy who's building that house and tearing up the roads and leaving them like shit?
Yeah.
When they leave?
And unfortunately, you can't review.
Little Fork got how much money per house at Clever's Corner? Little Fork got how much money per house? They got $1,000 per unit. They're 782 units. That's a chunk of change.
Is that new house on the VDOT road or is that on a private road?
They're all private roads. So here's. Which means I'm gonna put a gate up at both ends and give Todd a key. Here's the reality of Chester Gap, you know. Do they have needs? Yes. Do they have needs greater than a lot of other people in the county? Yes. Is it multifaceted needs? Yes. Have they been to talk to us about the roads? No. Have they been talked to us about their septic or, or water? No. Have they been to us to talk to about their fire hazard? No. So, you know, they have needs, they have issues, and we perceive them. And we would be happy to address them if they came and talked to us, but they haven't. They seem to be happy with where they are. They're building more houses, they're making more babies, they're, everything's wonderful up there. Maybe they're happier than we are.
They could be, yeah.
You know, we're hot in the mountain. Always hear the story of the woman in West Virginia who never had hot water. She got hot water, got, first time she got in to take a bath, she scalded herself and died. So, you know, so I don't know. But there, you know, the, the solutions there are the problem, but they have to raise their hands and say, hey, we have a problem, can we work on a solution? So, you know, we put it in the comp plan, we recognize it, and which is what we're supposed to do. And then maybe down the roads, something happens.
And I think the supervisors have been diligent in when Chester Gap has come and asked for something. We do always try to help them. So, I mean, it's, it's, you know, we, we wanna solve the problems that people want us to solve.
I want McDonald's.
I don't think we're gonna help you with that, Brian.
I guess I'm wondering. I wonder how well the people that are building up there, coming into the area up there, how well are they advised by the realtors and so forth, what they're, what they're getting into? You know, you don't, we don't, and you don't buy property that's unseen and you're not well aware, what you, what, where are you getting yourself into? You don't do it.
Well, we don't do it.
No.
But a lot of people do.
But then, say, to say, those people have to pay the consequences.
That's exactly right.
But I know we got a problem up there, but something needs to be done that these people are well aware that they're not coming, they're not coming here from Merlin Fire Factor, whatever, and you're coming in and doing different work.
So people, a couple things about real estate. People drive till they, they can qualify. And you drive to Chester Gap and it might be a little bit cheaper than similar areas of Warren County. So you can, you know, if you need a $300,000 or $400,000 house, you can find it in Chester Gap. And there's some modest housing being built in Chester Gap in this price range. And if there were, if people were really upset and disappointed in all this, after they bought their house, you would see it sell in a year or two, and you're not seeing that. So they must be happy. I remember some years ago, we had a hell of a, about 15, 20 years ago, we had a hell of a bad winter. Well, that following spring, there was like 20 properties in this county that went on the market. And the people said, I'm leaving. And they left. And they were, you know, half million, $800,000, million dollar property, they left. These people, they need a place to live, they, they found it, and, you know, they got a way out. I mean, the properties are appreciating up there. I mean, I, I think there was a house up there that was put on the market for $700,000, wasn't it? One of the two stories. Really good. Yeah. So, I mean, there are some, getting to be some bigger value properties up there, but there are still the modest ones in the 250, 300s. So, you know. So, you know, it, it seems to be something working its way around up there.
Anything else? All right. And that, I did breeze by the new informational item, the subdivision applications, of which there are none. Our next regular meeting is November 19th. If, and if nobody has anything else, could I have a motion to adjourn, please? Thank you, and a second? All right. Thank you. Motion, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.